Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, or excuse me, Monday, August 5th, 2024, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with council member partially excused this evening. For those in chambers and those watching online, we are meeting tonight on Monday evening because tomorrow is primary election night. And so we are meeting this week on Monday. So with that, we will move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Sort of first item on our agenda this evening is item 2A, which is Special Recognition, a proclamation recognizing overdose awareness day. And here to present this evening is our city manager, Jay Burney, followed by Katie Strozick, the opioid response coordinator with Thurston County Public Health. Jay?
Thank you, Mayor Payne, council members for the record, Jay Burney, city manager. Before turning it over to Katie, I thought I would talk a bit about how opioids affect us at the local level and some numbers around our response. From 2019 to today, we have seen the number of Washingtonians lost to overdose increase every single year. Last year, from 2021 to 2022, we saw a 19% increase in those lost to overdose deaths. In Olympia, OFD responded to 488 opioid-related encounters, and in 199 of those instances administered Narcan or naloxone. 67% of those treated with naloxone needed more than one dose. This is larger than the national average. OPD reported 44 drug-related deaths in Olympia over the past year. The common drug combination being fentanyl and methamphetamine. The Olympia Police Department applied Narcan to 19 different subjects, with most incidents again requiring more than one dose. 180 persons, 180 with persons whose underlying issues were substance abuse-related. We are also fortunate, in our community, we have resources, like our familiar faces program and our crisis response unit in the Olympia Police Department, that are active in trying to work with and support community members to help them navigate sobriety and get into recovery. As council is also aware, we are part of several opioid settlements, and we'll be working countywide through an opioid abatement council to help get resources directed to curbing opioid addiction and death here in Thurston County. So that's it for me. I just, again, wanted to provide just a little bit of intro to this and why this is so important for us to be doing this special recognition tonight, because it's a national-level issue, affects us here at the home front too. And with that, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thank you. Katie Strozick, opioid response coordinator, Public Health and Social Services. I first want to thank City of Olympia for continuing to issue this proclamation on a yearly basis. I believe this is at least the third one that's been done now. And it really shows the community's commitment to addressing this issue and making it a priority for our community. So with the proclamation being around overdose awareness day, I first want to highlight that overdose awareness day internationally is August 31st, and it's really meant as a day to remember those who have been lost from a fatal drug overdose, to celebrate those who have responded with naloxone and hopefully reversed an overdose, to recognize those who have survived an overdose of their own, and then also to reduce stigma around both overdose and drug use in general. This ties in with our efforts from the Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force, as well as our Thurston County Opioid Response Plan, which is adopted annually by the Board of Health. We have different strategies in that plan, and we also have different workgroups that are open to the public and any jurisdiction to join, from prevention, treatment, overdose, as well as pregnant and parenting populations. This year, for overdose awareness day, there are three events in Thurston County. The first one is going to be in Yelm on August 10th, from 12 to 5, at Yelm Skate Park. There will be a skate competition in honor of someone who lost their life out there. There also will be things like pizza, resources, overdose response training, and various resources. There also is a pregnant and parenting-focused event on August 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that's going to be down by the water at Harbor House. And then we'll be doing our large event down at Heritage Park on August 30th, and that's from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., with a memorial group walk from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. as well. And at all of those events, you can get access to free naloxone, and you can get trained on how to respond to an overdose yourself. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Katie. Any questions or comments from the council? Mayor Potemwen?
I always try not to speak for us all, but I think I'm just gonna speak for us all, and thank you so much for being here to receive it. I think it's also the third time, and I also believe it's the third time that it's been you to receive it. This is tough, really, really, really important, and tough work that you show up and you do every day. And it's consistently been you and the team that I haven't seen. I always see you. So just really impressed with all that you do, and thank you for spending your evening with us.
Thank you.
Well said. So now we have a shared reading of the proclamation. Usually we have you speak after, but I thought it was appropriate to provide some context before we went right into the shared reading of the proclamation. So we will begin with council member Cooper.
Whereas no community in Washington State is immune to accidental or intentional overdose, and drug overdose deaths remain high across the state, impacting urban, suburban, and rural communities, and disproportionately affecting marginalized populations, and...
Whereas overdose deaths are preventable and can be caused by alcohol, over-the-counter medicine, stimulants, and opioids. And whereas, like many places across Washington State, we need to continue to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue and invest in best practices that save lives and build communities, and...
Whereas, observed on August 31st every year, International Overdose Awareness Day seeks to create a better understanding of overdose, reduce the stigma of drug-related deaths, and create change that reduces the harms associated with drug use, and...
Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is an opportunity for all of us to stand beside those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and to those who have a substance use disorder and are diligently working towards recovery, and...
Whereas, anyone can visit the statewide resource, wwwstopoverdose.org, to obtain naloxone, an opioid overdose reversal medication, and recovery helpline at 1-866-789-1511 for 24-hour information and help, and...
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day in the City of Olympia, and call upon the community to join in raising awareness of drug overdose morbidity and mortality by reducing stigma through education, prevention, and treatment and recovery support for substance use disorder. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 5th day of August, 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor. And Katie, I have a signed proclamation here for you to present to you. Okay, so that concludes special recognition for this evening. And we don't have anyone signed up in chambers for public comment or online this evening. So we will move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. Do we have any questions, comments, or polls for the consent calendar? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I need a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to our other business for this evening, and we will move on to item 6A, which is an update on the Olympia Municipal Court. And here to present this evening is Judge Pam Nigera from Olympia Municipal Court. Thank you so much for being here this evening, Judge.
Thank you all for having me, and I have to say thank you, Jay, and I know Katie left, but what a great day for us to actually be here, because as we all know, substance use disorder is such a huge topic within our court system as well. So somehow it just, we married this combination and the agenda very well.
Yes, you should have a... Yes, Carrie's making her way to assist you to the podium. Yes.
That's my clicker?
Thank you.
Yes, and we have allotted 20 minutes for this presentation this evening before we move on to our next agenda item.
And I will say that primarily I put these slides together for you all to have, because I've taken office in October, and I will say that these 10 months have been filled with innovation, and we've really changed a lot. And unfortunately, in 20 minutes, I truly could not ever get to all of these things. But hopefully, it will give you an idea of all of the things that have been happening. Will give you a chance to look at over, and if you have questions, I am happy to return, to come to a study session, or meet with any of you 101. But again, hopefully this will give you a little glimpse as to what we've been up to. So first and foremost, Olympia Municipal Court has really three separate departments within our judicial branch. We have our court services, we have probation, and we have our community court. All of these changes have happened in all three departments. In court services, we have a multitude of new things. Some of these that I, again, gonna touch base a little bit more in-depth than others. But really, the view from since October was, let's look at everything. Let's make sure that access to justice is at the forefront of this court, that every policy that we have is inclusive and proper, according to state law, court rules, and so on. So you're going to see, again, a lot of changes, and some of these things, again, are a little bit drier and done because they needed to be done in order to comply with rules and statutes. So I'm not gonna waste a whole lot of time in them. But what I really want to talk to you guys about is, for instance, what we've been doing to do public outreach, right? One of my main goals is not only to do better, but to inform the community as to what we do. And in hopes to further that goal, we have created social media. We are in the process of updating our part of the website so that information is accurate. It shares more about what we do and how we do it. And we've created events. We have hosted already two drives and two resource fairs in these 10 months. We have been participating in career fairs. We will be, we are developing a fifth-grade mock trial, and so on. Again, with the hopes of reaching every different age of our community and ensuring that this news really reach our entire community. Very important with all of these changes, my main goal was always to ensure that our staff and our team was growing together and ensuring that my team, as you can see heavily here today, was not left behind or felt lost in these changes. So we have restarted doing annual evaluations. We have created an anonymous survey that we have absolutely everyone responded, which obviously you can see are pretty phenomenal results with absolute something that I am proud to share. And so on, right? We are improving the entire court services so that, again, we can better serve our community. I've obviously really take serious public outreach and have been doing plenty on my own as well, but I won't bore you with that. We have been working, as you know, in obtaining a new building so that we can better serve our community, better serve our staff by being more secure, and have a better environment to work with. And there is a bunch more we will be doing, but again, limited time, so hold tight with me. With that, we're gonna proceed to probation. One of the main changes I want to do is to change the name of that department and change it to Community Supervision. As we know, in this day and age, the term probation is not well-seen, it's not well-received, and it does very little for the actual participants coming to probation to see that as an environment that they're well-received, welcomed, and offering them rehabilitation. So we are trying to change that structure to add, improve, and expand that already huge resources that we have within jail alternatives so that our focus will be rehabilitation. We've had one major change that we've just concluded, contracting with a new UA provider. This will absolutely save us money while assuring that we are having that balance between accountability and rehabilitation. Within our jail alternatives, we also wanted to show you guys a little bit all of, not only is this a great way of rehabilitating folks, but it's also a very much more economical way of addressing the problem. Within, as, if every time we send an inmate to Nisqually Jail, we pay $130 per night, per inmate. So in exchange for this year, from January through July, we've had 204 days done in work crew. So that translates, just this year alone, to $26,000 saved. That also means in electronic home monitoring, $131,000. And in soberling, which is a breathalyzer that you basically take home and you submit random breathalyzers throughout the day, another $225,000. Not only that, but our work crew people are working on the streets, doing good, cleaning our streets, revitalizing our community, and not only saving money from other employees that would have been doing that work, but also assisting our local businesses by returning property that is found, like shopping carts, and so on. So a lot of great work being done in our community supervision. Now, I'm gonna take a deep breath, because I feel like community court is what we really want to hear about. So our community court. I will be very frank that when I've arrived at Olympia, this was what I was the most excited and what I've became the most disappointed with. And the reason for that is because I found best practices nowhere. So what we did was, we invited the Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, to come in and audit the program. We had them interview every staff member, attend our hearings, attend our staffing, and truly provide us with guidance as to how to move forward. That process happened between December and March. We have now broken down these recommendations. We have been working in restructuring this new program. By restructuring this program, we have also been able to receive the biggest grant we have ever received for our community court. So we've received over $210,000 for our community court this year. And we've renewed all of our memorandums of understandings, our contracts with our providers. And we will be officially relaunching our community court program on September 18th, which we will invite all of you to attend. You will be able to observe our court hearing between 10:30 and 12:00, and our team has committed to be available for a meeting greet between 12:00 and 1:00 o'clock. And you will get personalized invitations as well, so no worries to memorize that date or anything else. But again, about best practices, in this part I'll skip through quite a bit, but again, you will have a copy of these slides for your review. But I wanted to give you an idea as to what I mean by best practices and what was that to work on, okay? So when we talk about best practice, we talk about the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, formerly known as NADCP, now known as ALRISE. These folks have decades' worth of evidence collected. They have a manual out and 10 specific standards. And again, every time you talk about an evidence-based program, you want to make sure that you follow the evidence. Otherwise, you don't have specific results, you don't have any guarantee of success. So this is what we were doing. So with standard one is working on target population. As you can see in every element of these things, I've targeted what we've done so far that is brand-new to this court. So again, a lot of information, and I will do my best to be brief so that I don't pass my 20 minutes, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. We've created three separate tracks, and in each track we have phases. And that's important, because we know that substance use disorder, mental health, and trauma alter the brain. And when they alter the brain, there is one simple way to help them heal, understand rules and requirements, and that is structure. That is studied, and it shows that this system works much better for folks to be successful long-term. So again, we've gone through the process of creating a very detailed step-by-step progress so our people can be successful. Standard two is equity and inclusion. So this is where a lot of the information that I know some of you've directly asked me for will come in. That's where we will gather a multitude of information and be able to not only have it, but have it in our system to review, to analyze for any potential disparities, and consider remedies. So we not only have this, but we're incorporating a review system so that we can correct any past mistakes. Standard three, roles and responsibilities of the judge. This part is, again, my part, and it's happy to talk more, but it's the boring part. Incentives and sanctions, again, we are creating a multitude of incentives and sanctions. And the studies are so specific that they show that the specific ratio for an individual to be successful in a treatment court is that you should have 10 incentives per each one sanction. With that said, it takes all of the team to get together and build that thought process of what is considered an incentive. What behaviors do we want to modify, incentivize, and create? And what behaviors we do not want to be repeated? So all of that takes not only studying, but team-building, which we have done and created together. And we now have an incentive and sanctions grid. Obviously, the substance use, mental health, we are continuing to maintain relationships that are already existent, trying to build the new relationships with especially providers. As you all know, sometimes there is a revolving door of providers within our community, and it's difficult to maintain one specific provider. We've had ideal options and consejo that have maintained our relationship, and we are trying to explore and bring in even bigger providers to the table, not to switch, but to, again, add on to what's available to our participants. Again, I'm gonna skip through this, just because I feel like I'm running out of time. But again, new UAs, multidisciplinary team we are creating. Not only our team staffing that we now all participate, now we require everyone to appear in court so that they do have continuous review and seeing by the judge. But we are also in the process of creating an advisory committee, which you will also be getting invitations for, and creating an opportunity to hear back from the community in which directions that anyone would like us to hear about. All right. So as you can see, full launch coming September. Hopefully, this will be where we will have a lot more data to be collected and share with you guys moving forward. But obviously, I also received the study created from the city for a committee of reimagining public safety. And I will be quite frank, I only really reviewed and focused on the court-related goals and strategies, okay? So I will not be speaking to anything other than court, because it's really not my business. But I wanted to address it and make sure that you all understood what we are doing. And regardless of the fact that we can't influence each other's decisions, that we're separate branches of government, that we are here to collaborate, because overall, we do have the same view and mission. So with that, with regards to the building trust, we wanted to obviously stress the fact that we are establishing that vision of access to justice, to provide education to everyone, and really incorporate and provide the best balance between accountability and compassion. Again, being our community court and our community supervision department's taking front in this specific strategy. With the data monitoring, obviously, our community court and community supervision will again be at the forefront of this. I do want to mention that unfortunately, in the main traditional courtroom, we cannot gather data. And that's for defendants' rights. That's not because I don't want to, we just cannot. They have the right not to share that information with us, and we have to respect that. So obviously, every time someone is sent to community court or is post-conviction and they're in community supervision, we will be gathering as much data as we possibly can. But main courtroom needs to be left sort of alone. We can track filings, we can track charges, but we cannot necessarily ask someone how they identify themselves and things of that nature other than what they're willing to share on their own voluntarily. Obviously, the goal is to reduce overall crime. Like I started today, I'm happy that we came in today of all days, because this is really what I see and address on a daily basis. It is absolutely rare to see someone in my courtroom that is not affected by substance use disorder, mental health, or trauma. So this is what I do, day in and day out, and this is what I'm extremely passionate about. So everything that I do in all three of my departments are with that in mind, to reduce crime, to help our community, to make sure that folks are getting the help that they need. One thing that we're hoping to do with the new building is, right now, I'm not sure if you know this, but every Wednesday is when we hold community court. And between 8:00 and 10:30 is when participants show up and they report to our community court provider building. At that point, we have a multitude of social service providers that are there to connect with each one of our participants as needed. And the cool thing is that this is open to the public. So if you have somebody out in the streets, if you have someone in the main calendar, we have the ability of inviting them in and having access to those same social service providers. So one of the things that is one of my main goals with the new building is to expand the availability and multitude of these providers so that that can grow even more and hopefully potentially even incorporate collaborations with other treatment courts within the county. So that's something that I'm very passionate about as well, and I'm hoping to include. every policy is being currently reviewed in order to ensure that they are being equitable and inclusive. In our specific court, and I apologize, I think I'm ahead of the... Yes. In our court, we already don't have, most individuals don't pay fines and costs. That's because there's a lot of new laws and regulations with regards to individuals that are found indigent, which really are the gray majority of the cases in front of me. So that's already not a thing. But even for those that do have fines, we always, when possible, allow them to do community service in loop of paying fines and really try to work with them the best way we possibly can. With regards to this one, again, one of those that I kind of wanted to give an explanation more than anything else, we unfortunately don't have a say as a court as to what cases are filed in our court. Law enforcement issues, citations, prosecutor's office files, charges. We're sort of stuck with whatever's given us. But we certainly take steps to ensure that every individual has an opportunity to never come back to a courtroom. That is my goal. So again, we may not have a choice as to how they got there, but we certainly have a choice once they are there as to what we do with those cases. as to what we do with those cases. Expand the availability and use of therapeutic courts. This is, this has been at the forefront of my mind, right? This is what was the whole point of recreating the current community court, to ensure that it is compliant with best practices, to ensure that we can actually offer a program that has evidence-based likelihood of success for every individual that enters the program, not just the folks that would have been successful no matter what. Because if that was the case, then we didn't do enough, right? If someone would have been successful, had they been just in community supervision, had they had one person at their side, that's not the program I want to have under my roof. I want the program that will help the most amount of people. So that's what we've been working on. That is it. Again, I know that was a lot for a very short amount of time. I just wanted to say thank you again for having me. If you have questions, if you want to meet 101, want to have me come to a study session or another counsel with one specific topic, I am happy to come back. Again, the goal is to increase this collaboration and help us all move along in the right direction.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Okay, so I have a couple. Do you have one? Okay, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you for your opinion. Pardon me if I don't use the right terminology.
That's okay.
Sanctions and...
Incentives.
Incentives. Can you like make up a case or tell us something? Just like can get a picture of...
Most definitely.
One to 10 and what that looks like?
Of course. So incentives can have a huge range, so can sanctions, okay? So for instance, if somebody was in compliance that week and they did everything they're supposed to do. We have what we call a rock star of the week board and the names of the participants that are in compliance show up on that board. Having that name up on that board is considered an incentive, all right? Having, for instance, someone graduate a phase and have a certificate handed to them, that's considered an incentive. There is a multitude of different ways. And that can go, again, there's huge ranges and huge studies on what to do and when to do it. The idea is if it's a goal that is within your current phase, a goal that you should be doing, right? It's achievable now, like when they start, we say that their first initial goal is to show up, be honest and try. So show up is a big deal, right? When they're just starting the program. So every time they show up, show up to court, show up to an appointment, we incentivize that. It's a little incentive because they're supposed to be doing that, but it's still an incentive. Let's say on phase one, they don't show up. They get a small sanction. That sanction can be reporting to case management more often. It can be a paper, it can be an assignment, it can be community service. It really depends. But the idea is if it's something you can do right now, it's a small sanction, a small incentive if you do it, a little bit bigger of a sanction because you should be able to do it. If it's something in the future that is a big, big deal that you've accomplished now, then it's a bigger incentive, not so big of a sanction because we weren't expecting that of you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it absolutely does. And so I'm hearing in that recognition of your goals that are set and accomplished. Okay, thank you.
And every phase has a specific goal.
Right.
So it really is about, you know, making sure that we're tracking and that in case management is a huge piece of that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Gilman. Judge Nogura, I'm wondering, I've been concerned during sort of the hiatus or the slowdown of the community court about maintaining the relationships with the community providers who've come in. So I'm wondering, can you tell me how the court has worked on maintaining those relationships during this time?
For sure. So we still have active participants. So our providers, our social service providers are still showing up every week. That's still happening. We've also incorporated a quarterly meeting with our providers so that now we all get together on a quarterly basis. We not only talk about any changes in each social service provider, like if there's a change in staff or change in procedure, but every quarter we'll have one provider present on something unique to them. So it's a different way that we've gotten to have them involved, to get a little bit more buy-in from our social service providers and maintain that relationship. We also have them involved in our resource fair. We just had a huge event. All of our social service providers turned out. And that's huge. So it's really ensuring that they know what the vision is, that they know what we're doing and they do, they love, they love it and they're supporting us. And we had so far one, one provider that chose not to return, but we were also already looking elsewhere. So it wasn't unexpected, sort of speak.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judge. I can tell that that was a very quick, high level overview and there's a lot of detail that's missing.
Very much so.
I have a few questions. The first one being, is prosecution and defense sort of, what's their view of this? Are they aligned with your suggested?
Yeah. So obviously, I cannot speak for any specific individual other than myself, but Brianna Pinkston and Jeff Wicks have been the two prosecutor and defense attorney part of the team. They have participated in every team meeting that we have had and have had a say in decision-making in every step of the new program. So their buy-in is as big as any other team member. And there is nothing that has been done unilaterally up to this point. Every single thing has been a team decision.
Okay, thank you. So when you first started your presentation, you had said that you hadn't found best practices anywhere in our community court. And so you kind of went over the 10 standards very quickly. But are there any examples of where you might see current practices that are potentially damaging or harmful? Or are they just concerning that they're not best practices? I guess I'm just trying to understand the scope and the scale of the problem that you see with not having these best practices.
So a lot of the things that concerned me, there's two part to that, right? One, it seemed a lot to me that when folks came into the program, the goal is we will link, that was the term. I find connecting a better word, but the word was link, linking them with social service providers. And basically, once an individual was placed at the same breakout room on Zoom as a provider, that box was checked. And there was never any follow-up as to what did you do with that provider? Did that provider meet your need? What's going on? What are we going to do from here? So those links were always accounted for. And again, in my eyes, a lot of the individuals that were succeeding in that program would have succeeded no matter what, with very little help. Not to say that we don't have great success stories because again, we were that help, whether it be us or community supervision or any other person. The thing is, every time you buy into an evidence-based program, you need to follow the evidence. Otherwise, you're not doing that program at all. You can call it something else, but it's not a treatment court.
I see. So nothing potentially harmful or damaging, just not the best practices, would you say?
No, not really. I think it's harmful. I think it's a waste of public funds, to be all that honest.
Sure. But I mean upon our process, upon the individuals who are being processed through our system, the impacts for them.
Not giving them the best help is pretty harmful in my eyes, too.
Okay, I understand that. I guess I'm just trying to understand the specifics of how. So that was going to be my next question is maybe we could get a sort of like a document of what are our current practices are and as compared to the best practices and sort of like, so that we can understand each of those.
Sure. And that's a lot of where that standard comes from and where the new things have been pointed out. And when there were things that are already happening, I really put in ongoing so that you knew that that's something that was already happening. And then things that, like some of the best practices is and then in every three years, you do an evaluation with a potential safe group. And we obviously can't do that yet or won't be able to do it for a significant amount of time. So that I've also marked as not applicable yet. So when you see those slides, you'll certainly be able to see each one of the standards and every single prong of each standard, what's new, what's ongoing and what's not yet to come. So I really try to compare and contrast with what's different. And again, I understand that there is a lot of passion for the community court. Treatment courts has, like, that's been my baby. I've, that's what I did a thesis in law school. This is what I've been doing, volunteer or employed at since law school. That is the one thing I have never stopped doing, in fact. And again, I find it that when you have an opportunity of this magnitude, not doing the best job you can, not following the evidence, is a waste. So in my eyes, this was an urgent matter. It was an urgent matter to correct. And that's why, as you can see, I got in in October. By December, we had AOC on board to do this audit. That's not something I took lightly, to the contrary. I found that in order for it to be the vision and the goal that I find it to be of this importance, it needed to be at the forefront of our agenda.
Thank you, Judge.
Of course.
Councilmember Cooper has a follow-up.
Thank you. I just had to follow up to the last question by the mayor. Can you send us the report from the AOC audit, please?
I'm trying to think if we have a written report. We do? We had many, so let me explain this. So we had two to three different members from AOC that not only met with each individual, attended our court sessions, attend our staffing, but they also met with us in retreats, day-long retreats to debrief this breakdown of recommendations. So that's why in my mind, I can think of the day-long debriefs, but I can't think of the written report. But we can certainly provide what we have. In the slides, there's also the links to best practices. I will say it's about 300 pages long, so that's why I tried to summarize it for you all, but you're welcome to look at those. The website is right there so that you can easily access on your own as well. And of course, you are, we would love to have you join us in September for the relaunch, chat with every single person from our team, prosecutor, defense, case managers, coordinator, every single person so that you have a better idea, not just from me, but from everybody else as to how things are going and the changes that are happening.
Any other questions from the council?
All right, well, just gratitude. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I'm sure we'll be sitting on this presentation tonight. I probably will even go back and watch this meeting to watch the presentation again. And then I'm sure we'll be following up with lots of questions to continue the conversation.
Please do. And like I said, you all have my contact information, have to meet individually, come back, study session, however way you see most useful.
All right, thank you, Judge.
Thank you all.
All right, so that takes us to our next business item, which is item 6B, which is approval of an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Title IV to add a new chapter to Olympia Municipal Code 4.39 relating to recovery of certain costs of providing basic life support, emergency medical services, transport. And here to present this evening is our chief of Olympia Fire Department, Matt Morris, and our deputy chief, Mike Buchanan. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you. For the record, Matthew Morris and I have the very distinct honor and privilege of being your fire chief. So we're just only going to take a couple of minutes this evening and kind of get you caught up on where we're at on the BLS transport program. Chief Buchanan will share some details about the code change and the work we've done with the city legal to kind of get ourselves set up for this. So this program has been building for several years now. It was originally approved by council in '22, funded in '23. It was discussed all the way back to 2019 to 2020. Since last year, we have been working really hard to get the staffing in order to deploy and provide the service to the community that we've all agreed to do. In the last year, we have hired 29 people and we're in the process of hiring additional six. And so we've been challenged by the attrition in the organization as well. And so as we've brought those people online, we've been able to staff and deploy these new aid units. The first one's in service on the west side, one in service back in January. The second one just went in service on the east side at Station 4 in July, just last month. And so we have seen a tremendous impact already in our ability to provide services in the community and our performance. On the west side, we have six months worth of data now, basically, that's shown an improvement of our availability from 84% to 95%. And so a huge improvement in our ability to have a first unit handle the call in their district. Remember that as soon as we have to bring in a unit from outside the district, across districts, our response times will suffer greatly. So the impact of these aid units are very significant. We have begun to kind of slow roll the transporting process, getting people trained, getting them incorporated into the new business. We are prepared to start billing for transport in October 1st once we finalize all of the code changes. So any questions for me regarding kind of the overall structure or the approach we've taken? So I'll have Chief Buchanan provide you kind of the details of the ordinance change.
Nice job.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, City Council, for the record, Mike Buchanan serves as deputy chief. I'm going to go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and discuss, we set the billing transport rates in 2022 when we worked with the FCS Financial Group to look at the funding and sustainability of this program. So that is where the cost of the base transport, $1,300, came from. We'll be also charging $28.75 per mile from the emergency scene to the receiving hospital. And it is the policy that the patient will be first billed their insurance, Medicare and then state and Medicaid. Any remainder of the bill would be the responsibility of the patient. But as you notice in this is that if the patient doesn't have the ability to pay, they can write an attestation form saying that and that can be processed and that expense can be waived. But again, the thing that's important is nobody will, everybody will receive the support of transport or the service of transport regardless of their ability to pay. And that is the brief overview of the finance side of having to answer any specific questions you may have. Yes, Councilmember Gilman.
I'm wondering if you have a sense of how much, we have a couple of primary insurers, the Providence system and the Kaiser system here, what their reimbursement, what range are people with private medical insurance going to get as a reimbursement and what share that $1,300 might they owe?
I think the process that the consultant goes through to set the $1,300 range, because we work through the office of insurance, through the state office, to set that rate so that the insurance and the amount we bill are closely aligned, that there should not be a significant gap in the amount the insurance pays and then so that we don't end up in that place of trying to get them to pay more than the allowable rate.
Great. So this is somewhere in the same ballpark. It's not half or a quarter or...
Yeah, there's just so many different policies and different insurances out there. But it'll be very close to what people's insurance are paying in the industry as a whole in the state.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? I just have a question about, so once we have this new program, are we, or this new chapter in the ordinance for the city manager to begin the program, are we going to then monitor the data sort of like year to year to have an understanding of how many people are... are in fact taking advantage of the opportunity, because that could be, that can tell us a lot?
Absolutely. We'll be utilizing a third-party billing service system designed West to do the ambulance billing, so they'll be able to provide to us on monthly reports, kind of with all of that data. And then internally, we'll be tracking as much data as we possibly can regarding the transport system, especially when we start talking about patient care, quality improvement, quality assurance, compliance with regulations and things like that. And so, there'll be a tremendous amount of data-driven decision-making, especially when we start talking about the deployment of the location. Right now, we've placed them where we think they should go, and we'll monitor that, and if they need to be adjusted around the state, then we can do so as well.
Thank you, Chief. All right, any other questions? Councilmember Cooper.
If it pleases the mayor, I'd like to make a motion. First of all, I'd like to say it's been about 10 years since I've been asking for this moment, and I'm very excited. Thank you, Chief, and your team for getting us to this point, I know that there was a lot of considerations beyond quit losing money on transport when it's billable, and I think that we struck a really compassionate policy. So I'm pleased to make this motion. Move to approve the first reading and forward to second reading, the ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Title IV to add a new chapter, Olympia Municipal Code 4.39 related to recovery of certain costs of providing basic life support, emergency medical services, transport.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to add a new chapter to Olympia Municipal Code 4.39 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion passes. I think, I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you very much, Chiefs. So, that concludes our business items for this evening. So, we will recess for five minutes, and then we will reconvene for a close, I'm sorry, I'm skipping council reports. Yes, I will begin. Sorry, Jay. Almost. So, we will begin with council reports, I'll begin with the mayor's report. I do just want to mention one thing very quickly, which is, I am, I have asked for details to begin a mayor-for-the-day program, and I'm very excited about this, because I think that this will complement our youth council and their work very well. So, the purpose is for the mayor-for-the-day program will submit, it's an essay contest essentially, for civic engagement focused on engaging and educating local youth that are working in municipal government, and it's a way to get them exposed to what work happens here. And, you know, this is something that, I noticed that young people, when I'm out and about in the community, they're very drawn to this idea of, oh, what's the mayor? And then they grow up to be young adults in our community, and people don't realize that mayors have different responsibilities depending on the cities, and so this is an opportunity to get them when they're young in our community, to get them to understand the kind of government that we have here in the city of Olympia, as opposed to other cities, and obviously so much more beyond that. So, just to give you a little bit of what this will be like, they'll have an opportunity to be sworn in and shadow me for a day, obviously a mock swearing-in, receive a certificate of recognition, that'll be signed by me, special recognition selected for their essay, and it will be, could be read at a city council meeting, along with a news release and photo, obviously, with parental consent, of course, for the recipient. And there are just a few things that we're considering, such as the grade levels of the students within OSD boundaries, obviously, and only one entry per contestant will be accepted, and past winners won't be eligible. And so, judging will consist of myself and the mayor pro tem, and the winning essay will be selected based on creativity, originality, legibility, and maybe some other criteria that I'd be interested in hearing from you all, and what you think would make a good mayor-for-the-day program. So, please feel free to send me any suggestions you might have on what you think could make the program stronger. So, really excited to engage with our youth, and it's the fuel that kind of keeps me going when I talk to the young folks in our community, and what they care about is really inspiring and encourages me to keep going, so, excited to bring it forward. And I will start to, questions for me, mayor pro tem win?
I had a nearby council member whisper that maybe they should get a mayor's coin, so maybe we should have a Dante Payne mayor's coin created. It's a little advocacy on my part that I've been pushing for a long time, to get an official coin. Anywho, so, as well, I hope that, this is all sounds very exciting, I think that it has, you know, great lasting importance, and then, and then also, maybe, because the mayor has a lot of duties to do, maybe an excuse to have some fun, maybe? Who knows?
Exactly.
I hope that, just, not a yes or no for tonight, but maybe just a little kind of food for thought to think about is, love a great essay, and also, I love a great dance or a song or a poem or whatever. So maybe we could think about the medium in which they apply, I know that was something, a recommendation of the youth council, as you remember, and I can't wait to see, maybe I'll see what they come up with and we can talk about it. But, anyway, really, really exciting stuff, thanks for thinking of it.
Thank you. Yeah, you've been pushing me hard on that coin, and not exactly at the top of my list, but I'm picking up what you're putting down. And I will start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I'm actually sitting here thinking that this has to be on a Tuesday, and we have to have them participate with you in managing the meeting, because that's the real job, right? But then all the things that don't, people don't see is, behind-the-scenes work of the mayor is really great to expose, and maybe get OLE TV to follow you around that day too, right? So, speaking of civic engagement, tomorrow is election day, so I just want to make sure everybody turns in their ballot, I put mine in the box out front on the way in this evening. So, it's primary, so it's kind of not the biggest thing on everyone's radar, but it's really important. And then, last week, on Wednesday evening, I had the opportunity to attend the opening ceremonies of the Thurston County Fair. They, every year, as I've participated many times, they have some sort of elected officials contest, and so this year was, the theme of the fair was bees, so I have my bumblebee pen that I got from the 4-H kids at the fair, but the contest was dart throwing, bumblebee darts at a bumblebee dartboard. Sheriff Sanders took the win for the second year in a row, last year it was cornhole, so he has the arm, apparently. And there was a tie for second place between myself and Commissioner Mensah, and there was more than three people, which was great, because I've always been near last in all of those contests, and then we had one dart throw-off between Commissioner Mensah and I, and I took third. So, third-place dart winner, but it was really fun to be part of the fair this year, and just encourage everyone to keep an eye out for it next year, thank you.
Nice. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Mayor pro tem win?
It's cold supportive. It's just a comment, just two great PSAs. The, and I love to hear you so joyous about things that are happening in the community, but the first one about primary, I found myself talking to a lot of people about why the primaries is important, because a lot of folks think of it as, in quote, "When's the real election?" And it's like, well, do you want your folks to get on to the real election, you know, so, really, really appreciate that, it's always worth it.
All right, mayor pro tem win?
We, at our last CLIPS, our Community Livability and Public Safety meeting, just kind of two things, I won't go through our entire agenda, but we were just talking about a little reference to the Olympia Youth Council, and it is, you know, it's starting to materialize, it's really, really, really fun to watch, and a lot of hard work by a great group of folks, including youth advisors, but committee, CLIPS committee mates, found out that, in looking for what would be 20 seats next year for the official Olympia Youth Council, it turns out that most, if not almost all, of our eligible youth advisors are interested in continuing on. So, as long as they are able to sort of complete the responsibilities, and we're going to go ahead and roll them over, and then that'll still leave plenty of seats for other young people to apply. And we're gonna, we're gonna review applications this fall, but before that, with this little bit left of summer, there is this event being planned, driven by the youth advisors in the city, I believe it's in the downtown area, to drum up a lot of support. I mean, there's gonna be, there's gonna be ice cream, there's gonna be music and performances, it's really, really fun. So, more on that to come. I am not ineligible for the member, or for membership to the youth council, but, and I would try not to hover, but I feel like I'll be sitting somewhere next to a Percival Plinth, just staring and seeing how it's going, but it's really fun stuff. And we wouldn't even be here without all of this great work from different members of the team, but then also from approval for council, so, more to come. And then also, something that's just kind of been on my mind is, we received a presentation on basically a redistricting or a boundary updates request from our Olympia team here that is working on the creative district, and we had plenty of conversations for what was probably supposed to be like a quick 15 to 20 minutes, and folks are, continue to be really excited about what all the creative district could be, and wanting to be very inclusive, of course, of different, I guess, creatives, sometimes business, sometimes they take other forms. And I also find myself questioning if we are not, you know, being a little bit too open, and with the intent of being really inclusive, with the intent of being, you know, really, really thoughtful and kind. I worry that if the creative district boundaries are so big, then it's not really clear where the creative district is, and there's not a differentiation between is it a creative district or is a city as a whole just a creative city. I worry that there's not going to be a distinct experience, I think it's okay to not designate areas or businesses as creative, and, you know, we still have love for them and value them in the community. I worry that the, somewhere Mayor Selby is smiling, or former Mayor Selby is smiling, though, yeah, I worry that the longer the sign sits on the highway and there's not enough to show for it, that the shine diminishes, right? And folks say, hey, I went to this place and I couldn't find it, and that becomes a chatter, it's like, where is it? So, ultimately, we all voted in favor of updating the boundaries that includes a larger, a larger area, excludes some, so you'll see that soon come to council, but I've just, yeah, I've been thinking about that a lot, and I wonder if my support should have looked differently that day, I know it's not, you know, priority one for us tonight, but, or even this year, but, yeah, I'm just thinking about it, and I would appreciate any of your thoughts whenever we next grab a coffee or if you want to chat about it. Yeah, and if you don't have strong opinions, it's okay, just expressing mine, thanks.
Any questions? Okay, mic's not working. All right, there we go, I'm on. Any questions or comments for the mayor pro tem? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I would happy to sit down sometime and talk about that, I have some thoughts kind of about it, I've seen a little bit about the creative district, I'd love to have coffee sometime.
Oh, I'd love that, you know, I was talking to a big creative giant in the community recently, and they were talking about a festival street, and I heard that you are also very interested in a festival street, so, we better be careful, we might drum up a little too much work than we can handle, but looking forward to talking, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Pro Tem, for sharing that. I'll just offer that, so obviously the recommendation for the boundaries did make it out of committee to come to council, I voted for the recommendation of the boundary recommendations as proposed, because I thought, Mayor Pro Tem, your point is well taken, I actually think it's probably maybe, in my opinion, maybe ahead of its time, especially as we think about the way the community sort of organically sort of expands as to where the creative arts moves about in our city, and especially as we talk about the redevelopment of the Capitol Mall Triangle subarea, that area, we have a vision for more arts and things of that nature to be on the west side, and so, we do see at some point, arts and culture expanding beyond the current boundaries, and I think your point is well taken, that when that starts to happen, we give some consideration to what the mayor pro tem just said, so, thank you. All right, so, Councilmember Gilman.
All right, so, last week, I attended the Local Progress National Convening, it's a group of local electors from across the country, and had an opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes about our ceasefire resolution. And that led me to think about our, the Section 3, a commitment to partner with community faith, educational, and cultural leaders to begin conversations and develop actions to reduce antisemitism, islamophobia, xenophobia, and anti-Arab bigotry, and to engage the broader community together around understanding our shared values. I think there's still work that we can do, but I wanted to report that Interfaith Works has taken a documentary film called Disturbing the Peace, and had screenings for what they call the Program Council, for representatives from each faith community who participates in Interfaith, and then Fellowship of Reconciliation ran the same film for four nights this last week, and had a pretty good show-up. And I'll just, I'll go ahead and give you the little conclusions, I don't think it'll give away the whole movie, but it's a group in Israel and Palestine called Combatants for Peace, they're all former combatants who took the chance to sit down together and begin to have conversations, and sort of their bottom line is, neither side is going to push the other side out of that land, so we have to figure out some other way to resolve this situation. So, I just, I wanted to appreciate that Interfaith and Fellowship of Reconciliation have both taken on beginning to create these community conversations, and to remind us that we made that commitment, that as a city, we would help to make that happen.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Madron?
That's a really good reminder that we were in conversations with Reverend Corey Passon's in terms of how we could work with Interfaith Works to fulfill that part of the resolution, so I'll do my part and follow up with him, see where we can go with that.
Yeah, that sounds like it's sort of right along the lines of what we were hoping they would be able to provide for the community, and so, I'm happy to hear that those spaces are being created for ongoing dialogue. Any other questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Vanderpool?
Yeah, a couple items, so, on Tuesday, I went in to the archival collections for the Olympia Historical Society and Bigelow House Museum, Susan Goff's house property, and so, if anyone has the time to do that, I would recommend just at least trying to book a little bit of time to check it out, there is a huge amount of history stored at that location. I know that some of us are on, I'm not on that committee on 108 State, but there are items that even, even however you go about deciding that, that need to find a home one day, because it's on her property, she's paying for it, she's put in a HVAC system to keep the temperature right, I mean, they even have a model of this building in there, which is crazy, she's just got it from the architect, she's like, how did you get She's like, how did you get this? She's like, no, the architect didn't want any more. And I was like, okay. So, it's like, yay, big. So, I mean, it's really cool. So, reach out to Greg Griffith, he emailed all of us, try to schedule a time if you can. He also emailed me, because I told him, you know, he gave me a ride out there, and I said, just tell us, tell us, tell me or tell the council, and if you have ever, any other recommendations or anything, just don't be afraid of telling us. And he sent me a follow-up email. He said, you know, he really likes the historical, it'd be really nice if the Historical Society or other committees would be involved in the Youth Council. He said that came up, he thought, you know, if, and I said, well, if they're at capacity, you know, their kids are still, they're still in school, they have other things going in their lives, but I think that that's a cool, interesting idea to try to integrate that with all the other committees and stuff going on. So, the other item is that TRPC Assessment Subcommittee met on Friday, it was a very quick meeting. So, due to the cost of infrastructure, their hardware, servers, and inflation, that they're going to have to rise the membership cost per every member that is a part of the Regional Planning Council. And we looked at a few different proposals, and we landed at one that was proportional to where it sat at. So, it'll be around 14 to 15 percent per, increase per member. That way, it doesn't get out of control with certain members. So, and then in September, it'll come to the TRPC. That's it.
Sure. Questions for Councilmember Vanderpool? Councilmember Cooper?
Having sat on TRPC, I think there's some pretty small entities there, and I just wanted to check, is there a possibility that there could be a phase into that kind of a growth? Because no one plans for that kind of a jump in any budget line item, except for retirement and health insurance.
It won't be, come into effect only at least next year. Some of, this is based on the gradual, gradual percentage, because some of the models that we rejected outright were huge jumps for some of these members, because these rates were set in 2003, right? And there's a lot of changes occurred. The reason why I said between 14 and 15 percent is because 15 percent would give us more leeway, because essentially, because of the cost of servers and GIS and all these things that they do for the area, essentially does this every so often with their budget, and 15 would give them more of a leeway leading forward. But, yes, you know, we really want to make sure that we're not overburdening smaller organizations, smaller cities, and greater county.
Another suggestion there would be to, because I've implemented this in a few agencies in my time, is to look at adding a CPI, or making it per capita, so there's an annual increase, so that you don't get behind. And 15 percent should be done in three years, not in one year.
I'll be, I'm actually planning on tomorrow my 101 with Jay, giving him the documents so that they can see it.
Thank you for working on that.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Councilmember Madron?
On July 18th, the Land Use and Environment Committee met. We had a surprisingly short meeting, actually, it wasn't a surprise, we had some things drop off the agenda, but we talked about updates to our code as it pertains to urban agriculture. So, we're looking at some, a few changes, nothing major, but, you know, expanding where urban agriculture is allowed in the city, such as the downtown area, aligning our rules around farm animals, livestock, with what Tom Water has, which is a bit more permissive. We talked about a few other things, too, but it'll go to the Planning Commission, they'll have a public hearing, it'll come back to land use, now it'll come to council. Seems to be taking a long walk around the block, but it'll get here. Regional Housing Council met on the July 24th. We received a presentation from our staff, Krista Lenson, on the Black Home Initiative. This is an initiative that is currently focused in South Seattle, South King County, North Pierce County, and they have a goal of getting 1,500 new black, low and or median income homeowners by 2027. And they work on an impact network model, so that it's not one organization leading, but a collaborative network of organizations. And so in Thurston County, there has been a group of local stakeholders who's been meeting regularly since April, that includes Washington State Employees Credit Union, OLE Fed, the Realtors Association, Habitat for Humanity, Thurston Housing Land Trust, the Northwest Cooperative Development Center, some others, and also including all the jurisdictions of the Regional Housing Council. And one of the asks that's been made to each of the jurisdictions is to sign on to the pledge for the Black Home Initiative, and maybe even do that as the full RHC, and start building some, to ask the Black Home Initiative if they'd be willing to expand down to Thurston County, so that we can, in addition to doing the work that we need to do as a jurisdiction, be able to leverage the partnerships that they have up north to fill in some of the gaps in our community. And we're working on bringing a proclamation forward for the City Council, so that we can share our support for the Black Home Initiative. I feel like we're all aligned on that, and I think the city managers talked with you all about it, so it'll come sometime next month. And then we also, we have a staff of the technical, the technical advisory group of the RHC has created a matrix of all of our affordable housing initiatives, the incentives we offer, the, you know, exemptions for various things, so that each jurisdiction can see what we're all doing, and kind of build off of each other's work. So, that was presented to us. And then finally, we've had a work group working for a few months on developing a recommended policy on manufactured home communities, and the kind of financial support the RHC may be able to offer to manufactured home communities, like, say, when their land goes up for sale, and it puts them in a bit of a bind if they're unable to be able to purchase that land themselves. You know, one of the options that was looked at was being able to provide a million-dollar grant or loan for an acquisition, which is a challenge, because you can only kind of help one community at a time, and then you end up in this first-come-first-served model, so it can be a bit of a challenge. Option two is annual funding for a period of 10 years, so being able to buy down $100,000 worth of a mortgage, and then you can serve 10, you know, manufactured home communities as opposed to one. And then option three is helping with financing for our third-party fees. And the recommendation that we approved as an RHC was to go with option two and three. And so, that is in place, there will be a set aside in the next round of funding, and we will be positioned to support a manufactured home community that's able to, you know, leverage other options. We can be a piece of the puzzle in helping to preserve manufactured home communities with that kind of a policy, but it's a lot of work done by staff and the work group of folks, including Craig Chance, the area, he really shines, he's like very, very smart on this stuff. So, that is the report from the Regional Housing Council, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? I have just one about the Black Homeowners Initiative. So, I think I might have asked you this in private, but I can't remember now. So, with signing on to the pledge, is that, is it sort of implied that we would then eventually establish our own goals as a county?
Yeah, or as a jurisdiction, you know, I'm hoping that the Regional Housing Council will sign on as a body, and that all jurisdictions will be working on it together, but I don't want to get ahead of my peeps at the RHC.
Sure.
But by signing on as the city of Olympia, the way that the pledge is designed, recognizing that, like, this is a partner pledge, so it's not just jurisdictions, it's for anybody who wants to be a part of the solution and be a part of that collaborative network in the, in the impact model. And so, you know, that would be up for us to decide, what do we, as the city of Olympia, want to do, like, what are our goals? What are the resources we're going to put towards it? How are we going to work with partners? So, each signer to the pledge gets to determine how they will contribute to that, but I did have that conversation with Krista today about making sure that the proclamation states that we will be identifying goals for the city of Olympia.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. And thank you to the city manager for knowing to just sign on to the pledge, you know, we're obviously just ready to go on that, so, thank you. Sure. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. You sparked a question in my mind. Councilmember Madron, can you remind me if the housing needs allocations that were just completed by region also include needs by race and/or gender?
They do not, just by income. That was what was required by statute.
Got it. So, I would look to us to see if we could get that, you know, do an amendment to the Olympia about, kind of just to add those needs as they look, as we look at the income by race and gender, because the housing needs become much more clear that it's for people of color when you disaggregate like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Great point. All right. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items. First item, sometimes a city manager draws really hard duties, and one of those was, yesterday, I got to judge the cupcake contest at the Thurston County Fair. I was glad to be able to do that. I know you're all still feel sorry for me for having to do that, but really had a great time, really grateful to the Fair Board and Thomasina Cooper for asking me to come and be a judge in the cupcake contest, so really enjoyed that. And then second item is, tomorrow night is National Night Out, just as a reminder. It's a night for communities across the country to connect with law enforcement with a specific focus in neighborhoods and crime prevention. So, I know several councilmembers are going to be out with OPD tomorrow around, we have very active neighborhoods for National Night Out, neighborhood associations, so I know there'll be lots of great food and great company tomorrow night. The mayor and I in particular will be out with Chief Allen, and again, I know several other councilmembers are going to be out as well tomorrow. So, look forward to seeing all of you that are out and about tomorrow night.
Thank you, City Manager Bernie. Any questions for the city manager? All right. See?
Oh, yeah. There was a question.
Oh, Councilmember Cooper?
What was the winning cupcake?
I just got to score them anonymously, I didn't get to see the final results, but there was a chocolate cupcake that looked like a Highland cow that was phenomenal. Phenomenal.
That sounds cute. Thank you.
So, whoever you are out there, you heard it here. All right. And so, one last time, I'll just make the plug that tomorrow night is the primary election, so please make sure you get your ballot in by 8:00 PM tomorrow evening. So, at this time, we will recess for five minutes, after which we will reconvene for a closed session pursuant to labor negotiations. No decisions will be made for up to 30 minutes in Room 423, which will be followed then by an executive session for up to 90 minutes pursuant to litigation and potential litigation. No decisions will be made for up to 90 minutes in Room 423, after which we will be adjourned for the evening.